Good evening. Thank you for joining us. We will be getting started here shortly if you want to make yourself comfortable. Okay, we're going to call the Castle Hills regular city council meeting in order and determine if a quorum is present. A quorum is present. We will proceed with the pledge of allegiance. Chief Zuniga, will you lead us? Thank you, chief. First up, we have citizens to be heard. Thank you. First up, we have ginger majors. Are you here for non-agenda items or agenda?
An agenda item.
Okay, so we'll call you up when we get to that item.
Okay.
Bernard, not agenda items? Perfect, come on up.
Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Bernard Jetta Meyer. I live on East Castle Lane. And I'm the president of the Castle Hills Community Organization. And we are, we had a meeting last month and we created a committee named the Castle Hills Historical Society. And that, in doing so, that will bring like an education piece to the Castle Hills Community Organization. And we just wanted to let everybody know. So if you haven't joined, please join and we'll see you at the next concert in the comments. Thank you.
Thank you. And next up, we have Dr. Ackley. Are you just here for the RR District, sir? Okay. Jason Smith?
Good evening, everyone. I represent the Castle Hills Historical Society and we have a gift for the city council that we would like to present them tonight. Several Saturdays back, we spent some time in the map room and found some items of interest that we would like to present. One is a copy of the original subdivision plat for Castle Hills that was originally designed in 1935 focusing on the area that is now Northwest Military and West Avenue. As you can, as you take a look, you'll see that there have been several changes since then. And also in honor of the 70th anniversary of the founding of Castle Hills, we have found a plat showing the original or the actual, this what still are today, the boundary lines of Castle Hills that was filed with the original documents that created the city back in 1951.
Perfect. Thank, thank you so much. I know that I know that you've all been working hard in preparation for the 70th anniversary. So again, thank you and everybody else in the committee for all the work that y'all are doing.
Thank you, Mayor Trevino.
Thank you. Okay, do we have anybody else that would like to speak on non-agenda items? Yes, sir?
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Wayne Carter. I reside at 125 South Winston Lane. I know we have much to do and much effort on our various streets and their drainage problems and that sort of thing. But what I would like to bring to some of y'all's attention that do not live in that area or maybe not be aware of it is a tremendous amount of traffic that the, that west of West Avenue area absorbs due to cut through traffic, school traffic, one thing or another. I have written letters to each one of you gentlemen, the city manager and the police chief, and I'll give the letters to the secretary and she can sanitize them for any kind of flakes or anything. But what I would like for y'all to consider either, either an agenda item in the future. I know the fire department does not want speed bumps and we don't want clickers and we don't want a gated community or anything like that. But we have to do something with the 50 mile an hour traffic that goes down Winston Lane and blows through that stop sign if it's not even there. A friend of mine clocked a, a, a mother taking her kids. She was doing 46 miles an hour down Winston Lane, all the way to down Fox Hall Lane, all the way down to Antonian. And it's just, I mean, besides the, the, the nuisance, it's the safety. That kind of traffic going down as we all promote, we lack our lanes. Lanes defined as 21 feet, no curb and gutters, no sidewalks. A lot of the neighbors behind me walk that area with their dogs. And these kids go down and I'm going to make some of my Fox Hall residents mad maybe, but some of their children blow down Winston Lane like it is a airport. One of our previous mayors one time told me while we were walking, Wayne, you really don't want to fix Winston Lane up like a runway because that's just going to increase the traffic speed. I'm like, yeah, you're right. Let's don't. That's why I keep, I keep pinging our public works director, don't fix the sinkhole. We have a sinkhole out there because of the compactive effort that wasn't given by AT&amp;T when they blew out our, our intersection with a water dig in. It is sinking out there. And they come out there and they put the coal mix on there and they let the traffic go over it and it gets deeper and deeper and then the traffic goes around it. One time when we had a Hackberry Tree fall that big around in diameter, right in the intersection, I saw one of our Fox Hall Lane teenagers blow right past our fire department people working the area for safety. I sat right next door to this intersection. And in my retirement life, I get to sit on the front porch. But we need to just address it. I don't have the fix. I know, I know speed bumps are all over San Antonio. But I watched one of our men in blue issue eight traffic tickets within an hour, two years ago before the lockdown. So I would ask our city manager, our police chief, they're the action people. Mr. Mayor, you have the pitchfork and the council, y'all get to vote on the money. But we have no traffic signs except for three that say 25 miles an hour, three. And none of them are incoming to our area. They're outbound. Don't know why. I think teenagers like to steal signs and put in their bedrooms. But we need to address it. And again, I don't want to take away the effort from our streets and drainage and that sort of thing, but it's a simple fix. Speed limit signs and when our, when our men in blue have some time to sit out there on the gravel driveway beside my house, hidden from the view, lay it on them. All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Do we have anybody else that'd like to speak? Okay, we will proceed to item. Sorry. Oh, yes, sir.
Thank you for letting me be heard. I'm Kevin Knepp. I live at 210 Hibiscus Lane. And I want to back up what he was saying. It did occur to me. But yes, police officer, maybe when they know it's a high time, maybe one of them could sit there and just even be out in the open, sitting in that church parking lot. And that'll slow people down, teach people that people are watching. Plus, that road needs to be fixed the right way in the future because I've come down it to not looking during rainstorms and I've hit that chug hole and it's going to destroy someone's nice vehicle. And it might even hurt a police vehicle or a EMT vehicle or car truck. So I'm backing him up. The road is very bad because of everybody driving like bats out of hell. And we need to put those outgoing signs too. And maybe when a police officer has some time, maybe he has lunch break or he's relaxing, watching the deer and watching the nice quiet. He can just park right there in the wide open and people that come down, it will get the word out. They're watching. Don't speed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Okay, next up, we have the consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I need that we adopt the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. May. Do we have a, I'm sorry, did I skip it? I will go back.
For three, sir.
I will go right back to that. Mr. Joyce, is that a second? Okay, all in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, council. I'm sorry, I missed. I have number three. Acknowledgement, recognition and promotion of the fire department personnel chief.
Mayor, council, residents and city staff, thank you for your time this evening. During the past two years, we've had four firefighters that have reached their 20 year mark or little more than their 20 year mark with the department. And tonight, we'd like to recognize those individuals and present them with a plaque and thank them for their service to the department. The four firefighters are Colin Jonas, who has 22 years now with the department. Grady Schmidt also has 22 years. Ken Lehman, as of next week, will also have 22 years. And Todd Lux, at the beginning of this month, made his 21st year. So if I could have those four firefighters. Now, secondly, we also had a promotion of Joseph Lopez to lieutenant. But due to COVID, we weren't able to do a swearing in ceremony. So we'd like to do that this evening also. Joseph had started his firefighter career with Balcony Heights and joined our department back in April of 2018. He, for the past year, he has been serving as lieutenant of B shift. And he's proven to have been the correct choice for the position for that shift. And he's also been proven to be an asset for the department in the city. So at this time, I'd like to present him with his lieutenant's badge and then also do the swearing, swearing in ceremony. Joseph.
Congratulations and thank you all so much for everything that y'all do for our community and for being the best part of Castle Hills. Item 6.1, new business, public hearing on the rezoning to RR Rural Residential Zoning District of the property located to the west of West Avenue, north of the property occupied by Antonian and south of Northwest Military Highway, except one property located fronting on Northwest Military Highway and covered by 2021 Bear Appraisal District property ID numbers 224157, 224158, 1315232, 1315231 and 355184. And to the West Oaks Planned Unit Development Area. It is 6:47. We will open the public hearing. First person we have is Dr. Ackley.
Dr. Ackley, 118 West Castle Lane. Mr. Mayor, city council members, I think we're here at the culmination of a, a long process. I'll be getting my perfect attendance pin for the 13 meetings we've held on this particular topic. And I'd just like to reiterate the rationale for the Rural Residential District. We had, we are on the narrow lanes as many of our citizens have pointed out. And we have stormwater drainage issues. That's primarily from overland, overland flow. And aside from that, we have the major aesthetics of this beautiful area, which is really a jewel, you know, not only in the Castle Hills area, but in the San Antonio metropolitan area. And I think it's worthwhile to consider preserving that and keeping it intact. At the same time, we have had a real renaissance in residential building in that area where many, many houses have been renovated or rebuilt. And so the, the real estate values have really increased with that. So it's both a financial and aesthetic value of, for Castle Hills. We've gone through a process which has been not contentious, but it has pointed out many details on this. And I think we've come to a consensus that this is really a major win for Castle Hills and it sets our, our stage for really enhancing the quality of life in Castle Hills as a whole. I want to thank you for your time and for the efforts and the support that all of you have given to this. And we look forward to completing it within one year or same year service to bring this to fruition. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up, we have Quentin Baker.
Evening, council. Quentin Baker, 213 Hibiscus Lane. Here as in previous times to speak in favor of the rural residential district. It's been a, a long path. But that, but tonight brings us to the culmination of that process where you can put into effect the actual rural residential district. Recall that your prior votes actually created the rural residential district zoning designation. You put that in place and you approved a boundary for that particular area, which the mayor read into the record. So the step tonight is simply to put in force the actual zoning now in that area that you previously approved. It's just the final step in this long process after numerous public hearings, both at council and at the zoning commission. So really encourage you to do that. Don't want to go back through all the benefits that we've, we've spoken to you at length about before. Just hit a home run for us and bring this home, please. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Janet Baker.
Janet Baker, 213 Hibiscus Lane. The boundaries that are, have been recommended to you by the zoning board are rational. They were a collaborative compromise between the zoning board and the members of the community who promoted it. And I believe the areas that are excluded are not truly being used as residential properties and they probably won't ever be converted back to a residential use. So their exclusion from the rural residential district is, is a very appropriate thing to do. I think y'all know, but it includes Aggie Park, Antonian, the West Oak hood, the CBS, the church area and a few other small businesses up and down Northwest Military. The purpose of the rural residential district is to establish appropriate lot sizes for our area because there is no drainage infrastructure. Overland flow is our, our drainage infrastructure. And I believe it would be detrimental to the neighborhood and to the downstream neighbors in Castle Hills and in San Antonio if we allowed more lots to be diminished and cut up and impervious cover, put over everything. It would only compound the water runoff issues. The rural residential district isn't just an aesthetics issue. It has to do more with preventing damage and ameliorating what has already happened. So I would highly encourage you to vote in favor of the zoning board recommendation for the rural residential district. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. Next up, we have Jackie Ackley.
Gentlemen, ma'am, I'm Jacqueline Ackley from 118 West Castle Lane. And I do come to agree with those who have spoken previously that I would support development, the ratification of a rural residential district with the parameters and boundaries described. This has been a trail of, my husband keeps count, 13 meetings and Juan Solis has conducted a very open process to where citizens have been invited to speak on multiple occasions. That opportunity has been presented. I know that you already know the pluses that we often speak about, the aesthetics. It's an accident of nature really that this little gem-like area has been allowed to remain, but it exists now with narrow lanes and no storm sewer system and actually no sanitary sewer system in the vast majority. And we're sort of at a tipping point. If dense development's going to occur, going to be allowed to occur, then we'll reach a point where we're going to have to have storm drainage and we're going to have to have wider roads and bring sanitary sewer to the area. And those would all be costs to the city. So in a way, it's a win-win situation to leave the area aesthetically as it is and to take that responsibility off the shoulders of the taxpayers and of council and mayor. So just the other morning, we got up and looked out our front window and not one but two foxes were crossing our driveway to cross the street to the Vega lot across the street. And just reconfirmed in my heart that this is the correct direction to take. So thank you for listening to me and I, I hope you will support our effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ackley. Next up, we have Markeen Bennett.
Good evening, I guess I should say, and thank y'all for what you do. We don't often get to say that, but when my husband and I moved into 124 West Castle Lane in 2005, I thought it was a rural residential district. So I guess my point is just that you're not really changing anything. You're just kind of ratifying what's already there. So I hope you'll vote yes because I'm very much in favor of it. So thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Terry Worth.
I couldn't, Terry Worth, 124 West Castle Lane. I have not been at all of the now 13 hearings that the Ackleys have. I can't say enough for them. I hope we will see this come to fruition in a positive way today. And then in the next couple of months or sooner, we can come before you and present a plaque to the Ackleys for all that they've done. The unfortunate, the unselfish, absolute, without a doubt, just totally service of the self for our neighborhood in my, my mind, for our city. Steve's comment, Dr. Ackley's comment regarding the jewel that crossed my mind today. We've all lived in different places and we've had our experiences. This is a unique, incredible opportunity in San Antonio and this neighborhood to become what it can be with you all's support. And I can't say enough of how blessed we feel to live here, even with the bump across the street, even with me getting into a habit now of, of, how am I going to say this, cleaning up the yard every morning when I give the deer more water. And that's, that's a, that's an experience. I have to get bigger bags now. But the point is, it truly is a rural district. And with y'all's support, it can be on the map now. Thank you all for all that you do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Wayne Carter?
Wayne Carter, 125 South Winston Lane. I must ditto what my neighbors, Markeen and Terry Worth said. To add to that, my parents moved into the new home on Winston Lane in 1946. My mom wanted to be in the rural area for two, two Tennessee walking horses and 100 chickens. And she sold chicken eggs to the neighborhood. 20 years ago or so, I still want to live in a rural residential district and I thought that's what it is. And I had to match the church's offer when they were trying to buy my parents out because the family wanted to sell it to the church. No, we're going to keep it in the Carter clan. Our rural residential area that we have all accepted and think we're going to have has been threatened by numerous attempts to disembowel us. And now we have descendants wanting to capitalize on certain acreage area. Well, that's the capitalistic way, I guess, of America, but not in west of West Avenue.
Oh, yeah.
We want to maintain our area as a rural area. And you can't do that when constantly you want to build on top of build on top of bill. I have not been as active in the past as with this initiative, thanks to Jackie and Steve Ackley, my neighbors and the Bakers for, and Peter Bella for championing this. But I implore y'all to consider a favorable vote for this because 25 years ago, maybe, I can't find it yet because I'm looking in two areas, either the Parade Magazine or Texas Monthly. I have sources looking there. There was an article, front page article, "The Best Kept Secret in San Antonio, Fox Hall Lane", because of the tree canopy. Winston Lane didn't make it because we're up on top of there, you know. We're, 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 we're.
Describe the hotels.
Anyway, it would benefit Castle Hills to maintain the integrity of this neighborhood. It does not need to be subdivided anymore. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, if that is it for the public hearing, yes, sir?
Thank you. Thank you for letting me have the opportunity to talk. I agree with my neighbors and I agree with doing this. My attitude is we need to do something to stop the coyotes from chick, getting all the chickens out of the coop. When my parents moved here in '52, it was normal to have an acre, two acres, even five acres of land. In fact, the people were selling the land. We're happy to get the money for it after the Great Depression. So what we're not, we're just trying to stop unwanted developers coming in and just trying to just run shotgun over everybody. If there's discussion on what people want to do with their land, then it can be discussed. then it can be discussed logically through zoning boards and people can make decisions. But I think it's very important to preserve what we have there. So I would hope that you would vote and take this consideration to vote favorably on this. And I want to thank all my neighbors and everybody that's put this together. And I want to thank you, the city council and the zoning board people for listening to all our arguments and all our concerns. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. If there is no, Mr. Bella.
Oh.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, City Manager. My name is Peter Bell. I live at 110 Hibiscus. And I just wanted to thank you for your attention. And I do hope you will vote in favor of the rural residential district creation as it's listed in the agenda. And Terry's right about plaques. I think that I'll be taking orders for plaques at the back. But my neighbors have been tremendous and I appreciate very much the chairman, Juan Solis, for his help and guidance in this process. He's been right with us and so have y'all. So again, thank you for your work. Thank you for your time and please vote yes.
Thank you, sir. Okay, if that is it, we will close the public hearing at 7:02 and proceed to item 6.2, Discussion and Possible Action on Ordinance 2021-08-10. An ordinance on the rezoning to the RR Rural Residential Zoning District of the property located to the west of West Avenue, north of the property occupied by Antonian High School and south of the Northwest Military Highway, except one property located fronting on Northwest Military Highway and covered by 2021 Bear County Appraisal District property ID numbers 224157, 224158, 1315232, 1315231, and 355184 and the two, the West Oaks Planned Unit Development Area. We have Chairman Solis here with us today.
Mayor and council, on behalf of the zoning commission, it is our pleasure and honor to be able to bring this for your consideration tonight. I thought back of when I first learned about the rural residential district and it was our work within with the Architectural Review Committee under the leadership of Jack Joyce, in which we had the first item that we had to deal with. And that is, of course, was basis. We learned there the need for us to be able to understand what was Castle Hills all about. When you look at the last two meetings, the new SoHo, this rural residential district, I commend this council for taking progressive. A new standard has been set for expectations for Castle Hills. This council with approval today will now redefine what we see in Castle Hills and set the standards for others to come behind us. So it's a great opportunity for us to look at what we are doing. Yeah, it was thirteen meetings, thirteen hearings, sometimes very repetitious. But what was important was the fact that I wanted to send the message and our commission wanted to send the message that we were going to be transparent, that we were going to be open, and that we had the opportunity for every single body who had an issue to bring it forward. That's the standard of expectation, that where is a community together. Most importantly, what we also did is provide first time, I think, an opportunity to reestablish what has always been a hallmark of Castle Hills, and that's neighbors working with neighbors. Everybody knows outside influences. It was just us, we who live here, working together, both as well as the commission, as well as the citizens together. It was neighbors talking to neighbors, neighbors compromising with each other. There was times I got a little hot and heavy, sometimes, and it was tough. Dr. Ackley, I apologize again. But we need to be able to make sure that all opinions were heard, that everyone had an opportunity to understand what was taking place. So we commend you all for giving us the charge. Thank you very much for thirteen meetings. You appointed us and we went right to work. One year later, we have your results. And I'm very proud of what we've done as a commission. Each one of the people that you appointed were on point, present, and delivered great information to all of us. So congratulations to you. All you have to do is pass it now and look forward to hearing y'all's discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Solis. Mr. Isbrand.
Mayor and council, I'd move approval of ordinance 2021-08-10 as notated.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand, seconded by Mr. Gregory. Before we take the vote on this momentous occasion, I'd just like to recognize my colleagues and everybody that's done the work for this monumental action that's going to help preserve this important area. It's really the defining area for the city of Castle Hill. So thank you all for your efforts and everybody's been involved. Mr. Isbrand.
And mayor, if I may make a comment as well, which has probably already been said. I think this is probably one of the most beautiful examples I've seen of how government can work because a good government should be about the citizens and citizens coming together to address the issues that are closest to them of finding solutions and bringing them forward rather than having others say, this is the solution for you. So I really want to commend everybody who has been involved in this process, the community, your activism, your participation is just a beautiful thing. And I also do want to take the time to recognize the zoning commission and Chairman Solis. I can only imagine what thirteen meetings must be like for anybody and the exceptional work that everybody collaboratively did here to bring this forward tonight. So thank you for the excellent example of government in action.
Okay, Mr. Paul, you have a comment?
I have a couple of questions. First of all, I agree with everything being said about it being a unique area that needs to be preserved. Couple of years ago, when someone started to replat and do all the things to some of the land over there, which was not exactly conducive to the area, we had no choice, or council had no choice, but to allow the replat because it fit within the square footage. The minimum square footage for lots around the city is currently fourteen thousand square feet. So it was frustrating to see that. So I started asking the question, why can't we just change the square footage requirements for that area? And then next thing I know, we get this. And to me, they accomplish the same thing I'm still trying to put my head around doing one versus the other because if we do an RR district, and Mr. Snoll, this is probably for you. Somebody, if they have something unique that they want to do, they can still bring it to zoning or Board of Adjustments or something to see if they can attempt to get their, whatever they want done taken care of. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, and again, I'm going to vote for this because it does take care of the situation. I just didn't, I just felt like we could have gotten there sooner. I appreciate all the work that the zoning commission has done. And unlike Mr. Ackley or Dr. Ackley, I was not here, but I've watched every session, so I can know what went on because I try to continue to learn. And I appreciate everything that the commission did. And you also, Mr. Solis, thank you very much.
Okay, with that being said, we will take a motion, all in favor? Okay, motion passing unanimously, the RR is. Next up, we have 6.3 Public Hearing on the Possible Amendment to Section 50-67A regarding parking in the unenclosed front and side yards in the A Single Family District. It is 7:10 and we will open the public hearing. Ginger Majors.
Good evening, Ginger Majors, 509 Gladiola. This is the second time I've come before council. I think I was at zoning two or three times. And for whatever reason, I'm back, it got sent back to council. Basically, I'm just against the parking pads put in a front yard independent from the driveway or the side of the house, but straight up the middle, by the sidewalk, straight up to the porch. And they were talking about the rural integrity being kept for their rural area. Well, I'd like to see the terraces integrity be kept up too. I mean, there's got to be some common ground here for what we consider aesthetically pleasing for a neighborhood. And I think it could be a win-win situation. If the driveway were widened, they could park diagonally. They've got, I think, sometimes four vehicles, sometimes five or more. But a diagonal pattern, I believe, would solve that issue. And I think it could have been done before, this is, this could have been a commonsensical thing done by city management or code compliances, just talking in a proactive way with this home. I don't think it ever needed to get this far. So I hope y'all will consider the situation and the problem and rewriting the code or whatever you have to do to solve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Does it, we have anybody else for 6.3? Okay, it is 7:12. We will close the public hearing and proceed to item 6.4, Discussion and Possible Action, Ordinance Number 2021-08-10-A on a recommendation from the zoning commission that Section 50-67 of the zoning ordinances regarding parking in the unenclosed front and side yards in the single-family district be amended. Chairman Solis.
Mayor and council, it's important that we continue to talk about what we just spoke about, and that is the institution of checks and balances with government. What it comes down to is about community involvement and community and need and necessity that when you start to imply and produce public policy, it's for everyone. The singular, we at the zoning commission denied this request based on the fact that it was just one person, one person viewed. Nobody else signed here. There wasn't a petition. There isn't a public mandate. So therefore, being able to reestablish in Castle Hills the understanding that one person cannot come up here because they don't appreciate the aesthetics and make you, council, change public law for everybody else, in essence, their neighbors. So we at the commission understood that. We denied this request. We think that it's important that we have public hearings about it, which we did. And we also think it's important that we also encourage people to understand that neighbors is a team sport, it's not an individual sport where if you decide you don't like the aesthetics of your neighbor and you want to redo their house, then perhaps you should buy it and redo it yourself. But at this point, the zoning commission did recommend denial of this request.
Thank you, Chairman Solis. Council, do we have any actions? Discussion, Mr. Gregory.
I'd like to know exactly. I'm reading this and it says, "The ordinance shall not be amended to revise the previous provisions regarding parking in an unenclosed front and side yard." I'm not really sure, are we looking at not allowing it at all versus what is allowed? Is that, is that the choice we're given?
Mr. Rappley, would you mind turning it down? It's kind of, I guess, it's pinging a little bit. Mr. Gregory, am I going to put that mic a little bit closer? I think we're all having a hard time hearing you.
Basically. That'll be a first.
Mr. Douglas, it's proposing no changes to what is presently law or policy by the city of Castle Hills.
Well, what was, what was the one person bringing forth? A requirement that we not allow parking in the front yard?
They wanted to change and define it as a different way from what is being done today. And that is what is basically in essence, they wanted to redefine it and we chose not to.
Redefine it to what?
They proposed that it be connect, well, you've heard her. I, you know, that was, that was just the question was whether we can redefine the way somebody has their front yard and the circular driveways or not circular driveways. And so the fear was also utilization of pavers of other utilizations. But that's not presently addressed in our ordinance as it is today.
In our package, we're given under pros and cons. Under pro, new language deters single-family resident front yard to be used as a parking lot, but it doesn't prohibit.
Correct. Mark, did you want to say something there?
Mr. Shaw.
I think it might be helpful if I read to the council the current text of 50-67A. And then council can look at the draft ordinance and see what the change that was consistent with what the single resident was concerned about. The current wording is parking of vehicles in unenclosed front and side yards, period. No vehicle whatsoever shall be parked in the front yard or unenclosed side yard of any residential premises except on the paved driveway thereof or in a carport or garage, period. And, and, and so what Ms. Majors was concerned about did not violate that ordinance, did not violate that because the vehicles that are parked in this other property in her neighborhood were all parked on paved driveways. She was just concerned about how many paved driveways someone could have. And that's what led staff to bring this to the zoning commission. The zoning commission has made its recommendation. But it ultimately, this has to come to the city council to decide whether it wants to leave the ordinance as it is or make a change.
And Mr. Gregory, if I may, Mr. Solis and Mr. Snoll, correct me if I'm wrong, but if somebody's going to do flat work as, as important driveway, that would have to be permitted and they would have to get approval. But what Ms. Majors is talking about is somebody can go put down pavers across their entire front yard and that isn't necessarily permitted and that will allow them to park their vehicles on the front yard because there was no permit required. Mr. Rappley, is that correct?
That is correct.
Is that the case today?
That's the way the law stands, that our ordinance is handed out. Mr. Joyce.
If I understand the proposed ordinance correctly, it allows parking in the front yard under two conditions. The first is as a drive that leads to a carport or garage. The second is on a circular drive. And to me, that sounds reasonable. I drove past that house and it, to me, it looks awful. With all respect to the zoning commission and their, their proper call for petitions and lots of folks getting behind all of this, I think the petitioner brings up a good point. I wouldn't want that to happen next to me. And I think that the ordinance proposed does a better job of preventing that than what happens now. Right, right now, the way the ordinance reads, that's okay. Louis couldn't find an objection to it. He looked all through that current ordinance. And what they did, well, they put some red pavers alongside their walk up to the house and called it a driveway. And they park a bunch of cars there. And I just don't think we should allow that, you know, for all of the reasons we heard about keeping, keeping the character of our nature in the, in our last discussion with the WOW neighborhood. But anyway, I, you know, I have great respect for the zoning commission and, and all of the folks on it, but I must respectfully disagree with them in this case. I think the petitioner brings up a point that we need to consider even if nobody else has said anything.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Paul, yes, sir.
To continue discussion, I think we need a motion on the floor. And my motion would be to reject the zoning commission's recommendation and to approve ordinance 2021-08-10A that we can have discussion on if it's seconded.
Perfect, thank you, Mr. Paul. Do we have, Mr. Joyce, a second? Okay, we can continue the discussion. Mr. Paul, did you have some comments?
Yes, I do. Again, I truly appreciate the way the zoning commission, led by Mr. Solis, handles these things. I think this is an unusual situation where we need to look down the line. We may have one or two people now that are putting pavers to make another driveway. That doesn't mean that five years from now, twenty, thirty people may decide to load their yards because it's okay to do it. I have a half acre vacant next door to me. It's associated with another home that has a half acre that homes on. There's nothing to keep them from bringing the way we are now because I believe the ordinance that we have now is a little ambiguous because it's implied, but it doesn't specifically state about the driveway how it is and where it should be. And that's why I think this ordinance would clean it up. But back to my original point, I think we need to look ahead. And if there's only one or two of these currently. And if there's only one or two of these currently on the ground around the city, that's probably why you only had one person show up to make comments about it because they could see it. I want to look down the future. I look at this and say, okay, what's the negative? What's the downside if we do this? I don't see a downside. Again, the way we're situated, somebody can put four or five driveways made out of pavers, uh, have a lot full of cars next door to me. It can happen to any one of us. So I think we all look ahead and try to get ahead of it. Hopefully, we never have the issue, but there's no, I don't see a negative in passing it, uh, this ordinance.
You can also make sure, if you want, um, understanding the direction is to send it back to the zoning commission to be able to look at that, uh, in, in a different view, right? Uh, addressing something that potentially could be that in the future. Because then you get into discussions of, you know, how do you, how do you define what is acceptable and not?
I think anybody in the city that owns property and owns residential property would agree that they're, don't want their neighbors to park four, five, six cars in their yard out front because that's not the way they moved, that's not Castle Hills. That's just my opinion.
And you can, correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, if I'm right, Mark, but also if the ordinance was to pass, it's not retroactive. Correct?
I wouldn't think so.
So the, the problem for that house will not be resolved with passage?
Well, that's one house, two house. I'm thinking about the future. I'm not trying to solve this one issue. I don't think we can do that. Just like on the R R district, we have, uh, lots of people bought the bill. I'm sure that there's going to have to be some mechanism so that they can in fact build because they own the property prior to the R R district. That's a little different. It won't be grandfathered, but they'll make arrangements. I don't think this will be grandfathered. I agree with you. But when you got two or three, that's a whole lot better than twenty, thirty, forty properties because they see something, hey, that's a pretty good idea, let's do it. And I think that is the type of thing that we need to be in front of in this case, instead of waiting for more people to complain or more people bring it forward.
We'll be glad to be able to take that back if you want to send it back to us to review it, uh, with the zoning commission, uh, and look at what the other alternatives we can bring back to you rather than just one choice. Uh, we don't have a problem doing that.
Well, Mr. Mr. Snoll, was my, um, motion appropriate?
Yes, sir. Your motion is, is germane to the agenda item and was specific. And, um, I agree with both you and Mr. Solis that the, the property that, um, Ms. Majors was complaining about would be grandfathered so long as those driveways or whatever they're called, um, are being used.
Correct. What happens, uh, does it stay with the property? If the, if the, I guess it stays with the property if the, uh, owner sells and leaves.
Correct. But once, if, if, if as and when the, the pavers are removed, then they can't be put back in if your motion is adopted by the requisite vote.
Correct.
Mr. May, you had a comment?
Uh, Mr. Solis, I just have a couple of questions. So, you know, I like consistency and I like the fact that citizens can point down the road and say, these rules apply over here. Why don't they apply on my street? So in the rural district, we have not conceived all of the variant, uh, suggestions for restrictions. That, that is a true statement. Is that correct?
That is true. And there's still more work to be done, um, because we've identified some other areas that, that need to be tweaked.
And so some of those restrictions being considered literally talk about the percentage of land on each piece or parcel that can be used for a certain thing. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
What I have a problem with in this drafting is that it's not, uh, it's not egalitarian, in my opinion. What I mean by that is a, an ordinance that might be more specific about no more than fifty percent of anyone's front yard can be used for a parking, um, placement. That to me seems a little more reasonable. And, uh, and I'm also on the same line as Mr. Paul, which I would like to see the zoning commission consider some variant of what we're talking about tonight. Uh, because I just don't, I, I don't think one size fits all, but we need some consistency. So I think my position on this tonight would be it goes back to zoning commission.
Yeah, it would, it would make sense, understanding of, of the council direction being given today, uh, that you'd like us to address the issue that in the future there may be an opportunity where you reduce what can potentially happen um, with, with utilization of some sort of, uh, and yet, but think of it the same way. And I, I, I beg to differ a little bit on you. If you have a circular driveway, you can park eight cars there. I know in my driveway, I can park seventy cars. And so the number is going to be an issue. Um, but, but what we're trying to do is find what, what Councilman May was talking about. And that is, you know, how do you find that, that in between ground? And that's something the zoning commission should definitely look at and review. Because the concern would be overall is what somebody could do and park cars in front of their house. A circular driveway can take at least six, seven cars. And if they have kids, who knows if they're, are there all the time? So if it's the car number, we have to address it. But I think the bigger picture, picture is in reference to what is allowable per yard. And, and I think that's a more, a, a larger question of us, for us to address, which we had not considered at all.
I believe this ordinance at the bottom pretty much defines on how it should be treated. And, you know, granted that if I have a small lot in a, in a smaller house, my opportunities, I, I guess I need to take that into consideration if I buy the house. Uh, you know, uh, I can, I can see myself now. I drive by your house. I, I see a lot of cars there. But if I saw a whole bunch of cars parked on that hill in front, I'd say, what's going on? And, and the neighbors would, you know, what, it, I just, I just don't think, well, again, I've already spoken that. I, I don't think it's conducive to, to Castle Hills and what we're trying to do to beautify the city and keep it, uh, pretty much neat and clean.
And that, and that definitely needs to go back to, and obviously just by our discussion, there's so much gray to look at and be able to define, define that kicking it back to us and letting us do the extra work for you and bringing it back to something that you can look at would be the answer.
Mr. Isbrand.
Um, Mayor and Council, I appreciate the discussion on this because it's, it's informed me quite a bit and to hear some varying, uh, opinions on it. I very much appreciate the work that the zoning commission does and I'm always loathe to second guess them, having served on it for many years myself and knowing what it feels like to be second guessed. I do have an issue about this, though. Um, that it's to, to Mr. Paul's question, what's the downside? I don't see a downside. Um, if the zoning commission wants to bring something else forward, they're more, they, they're more than welcome to in my book. And I would encourage you, Mr. Solis, to, you know, to do that. I think we can always get better at what we do. I am concerned that as I've watched the zoning commission and this matter has come up there, I just, I have, I guess I have a problem with the notion that because one person brought it forward, it's not worthy of consideration. And I wonder what precedent we set when we say we're going to establish a threshold that is going to be arbitrary on whether you will get a hearing and whether we will give you fair consideration of this. Um, and to suggest that we not pass something where we can see future improvement because the previous, what would now be the offenders are grandfathered in it is not a good rationalization to me on why we shouldn't do this. So I think there is ample opportunity and ex, and an exceptionally good commission to continue to pursue this route. But I very much believe that what's been presented to us tonight in the, in the proposal that Mr. Paul has motion is well worthy of our approval.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand.
Mayor, I just want to make a point and to Mrs. Major's comments from a staff perspective. Um, you know, obviously this is not a violation of the code, um, nor needed a permit. So this is the route we took because, uh, since this has been brought to our attention, Mr. Zam, Mr. Zamiron and I have been working with Ms. Majors on this. And then eventually Mr. Schnoll. And that was the direction we told was to, needed to go to zoning. So I just want to make sure you all know that's, that, that, I just want to make sure you all know that staff has been working on this. But again, um, without any changes to the code, um, we can't do anything about it.
Thank you, Mr. Rapley. Uh, as I was saying, I, I have a little bit of heartburn with, I feel like a lot of what we do in Castle Hills has checks and balances. That's the whole reason that we have the R R. And I mean, we had protections in place before the R R, but we fortified that. And my, my rub is that somebody can go put pavers across their whole entire driveway uh, without getting any kind of permission for ensuring that it fits with the community design standards. And we can't really say anything. I completely agree with you, Mr. Solis, that it's, there's not a public outcry yet. But I'm of the opinion that sometimes it's good to get in front of those if it's something that we can all agree on that it's not what we want to see. And I think that's kind of what happened in the R R district. It hadn't got horribly yet, but we could see what was happening. And we saw the train going towards the ravine and we wanted to protect the area. And I want to protect the rest of the city as well. Mr. May?
Just, just a brief comment. Uh, the comments by Councilman Isbrand have swayed me because no progress, incremental progress is better than no progress. But again, I, I do have some concerns about some nip tucks that we could put into place that might make this more egalitarian. Uh, so I'm in support of the motion.
Do we have any other? Mr. Joyce? Mr. Gregory? Okay, well, Mr. Paul has presented a motion. I believe Mr. Joyce seconded on favor. Okay, motion passing. Yeah, we'll see, Mr. Solis.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, item six point five, updating discussion on the new comprehensive plan by the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee, also known as CPAC. Mr. Joyce?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, folks, I'd like to present two things this evening. Uh, the first is a literal update on where the group is on the comprehensive plan. And then the second is a summary, it's a draft summary anyway, of survey results. That survey, you may recall, we sent that back in February. So I think Mr. Rapley is going to get it up on the screen. Okay. Great, thank you. So, uh, anyway, what we have accomplished so far, we call the plan Create Castle Hills Determining Our Future Excellence. And that's a very deliberate title. We want to take control of our future and not just let the future roll over us.
Oh, thanks.
I'll run it for you. The wrong one. You can see technology is not my forte. Okay. Um, alrighty, so getting underway then. What we've done so far is that we completed the survey. Uh, the website is just about there. Uh, I think the content is already there, but it's kind of in the wrong place. So I'm working with, uh, Scott, the intern, and hopefully in the next day or two, we'll have that squared away. Uh, we have acquired funding, as Council well knows, and we also have some private funding to help with some of the incidentals. We have contracted with the consultants. Mr. Rapley signed them a month or so ago. Uh, we held our kickoff meeting last week and have begun to develop a schedule. And so if we, if we turn to the next page, we can kind of see what that schedule looks like. And I've been kind of making noises about this speaker's forum for the last few weeks, but that's coming up at the end of the month. And we expect that to be a really interesting series of conversations about master planning type things. Uh, things like sustainability, um, economic development, residential real estate, commercial real estate, uh, education. Mr. Leos from, uh, Northeast Independent School District will be here to discuss education with us. And so we're trying to get the word out, so we would appreciate the attendance. We're going to have a few hours on Tuesday night, the twenty fourth, a few hours Thursday night, the twenty sixth, and then all day Saturday, the twenty eighth. So we hope folks will be able to, you know, attend one or two, maybe all sessions, who knows? But we hope they'll be able to ma- make at least a couple of them. So that's the, and also the, the great thing about that is there'll be opportunity for dialogue. And, uh, this survey will present sort of a snapshot of what we heard in February. But we'll continue acquiring information from the folks through the speaker forums and also through the workshops, which will be coming up in October. So anyway, uh, after that, then we get into September where we have the, uh, so-called community outreach and analysis of the speaker forum data. That's something we're going to be doing at that time. By community outreach, what we mean is getting the word out for the engagement sessions in October, the workshops in October. And, uh, so then, once we get to October, we'll have a workshop on the fourteenth and the eighteenth in the evening. I believe five thirty is the appointed time. I think it's a Monday and a Thursday, if, uh, if memory serves. And so those, the, the designers call them engagement sessions, but those are really the, the interactive workshops. That's where they'll set up, uh, set up tables and pose questions to us, maybe questions about land use or questions about sustainability or whatever the topic might be that particular day. Um, and set up exercises for us to do as a community and have fun. They, they want to make it a fun kind of session. So that's going to happen in October. Then in November, uh, they take some time, the consultants take some time to analyze it and put together a summary for us of what they've heard and, uh, begin developing their findings. And that's, that's a really important piece because that's beginning to get to what this comprehensive plan is actually going to be and what it's going to say. And so they'll put some exhibits together and present them in, uh, in December. I believe we'll have a council, a council meeting in December and present that. And, uh, in the meantime, the actual document will be underway. So we'll have, I guess, three different ways to gather community input. The first is a survey, then the speaker's forum, and then the so-called community engagement sessions. And then, of course, we'll present the draft document to the community and, uh, make any adjustments that are required to be made. And so that, that will take us through the year. We'll probably finish up early next year. And at that point, one of the things we really want to do is develop a capital improvement plan if, if the folks call for it. And, uh, because we want to avoid, that was what has happened in the past, as you all well know, where these things are beautifully done and then they sit on a shelf and gather dust. And so we want to make this C I P part of the plan if, if the citizens call for it. So anyway, that's where we are. So, uh, if, if Mr. Rapley wouldn't mind getting the, the next presentation up.
It's a big one, it's twenty minutes.
There we go. Thanks, Ryan.
Oh, yours, Mr. Joyce.
Okay, thank you. Um, so anyway, this, as you realize, this was done in February and we, we had what we felt was a very nice response rate with about two hundred and forty responses. Uh, that's about eleven percent if we're, if we have two thousand households, a little bit over eleven percent. So we thought that was a very nice, uh, response. The demographic data, um, is, that's why we're calling this a draft really because the census, of course, is not out yet. It's expected out later in the year. So we'll, we'll finalize the demographic information when we have that real information. In terms of respondents to this survey, out of those two hundred and forty, it really is kind of weighted toward folks with families and children. Whereas, uh, roughly sixty percent of those who responded have children, only twenty-two percent or so in our community are families with children. So it's a little bit weighted toward the families. And so as I mentioned, this is the first of many ways of gathering and. And so as I mentioned, this is the first of many ways of gathering information. So in 2019, according to this ACS survey, and the ACS is what the US Census Bureau uses in between the actual census. They put our population at a little over 4,400 as opposed to 4,100 in 1990. And preliminary results, we're not ready to make any strong statements, but we, it's looking like that we're, our community is getting younger. And there's more families. And so we'll, but we'll get more into that a little bit later when we have the 2020 census stuff. But in terms of some of the other things we asked, most, the vast majority of people own their own homes, as you're not probably surprised. And interestingly, most folks, like 78%, would prefer to stay in Castle Hills, even when they reach a point that their house is too big for them. And most, you know, 50, between 55 and 60 some odd percent have attended various city events, whether it's a council meeting or something in the Commons or community organization event. So they're pretty involved. That was part A about that, then. COVID-19, we asked a few questions about the virus, and it seems like that's never gonna go away, but anyway. About two-thirds of respondents reported that their household was impacted by the, by the virus. 18% said that the household's wealth, excuse me, health was impacted. And. 30%, next please, Ryan. Thank you. 30% said they were hit financially by it, and a little bit paradoxically, I guess, most were open to in-person meetings. We were kind of trying to feel for what the workshops might look like. But most were open to in-person meetings, but still two-thirds of them prefer the Zoom. So there's still some anxiety out there about this virus. But this next section may be perhaps the, the heart of the matter here, folks. And I'll, Ryan, if you don't, what we did was ask, there are four questions we're gonna look at. Three of them have to do with your area in Castle Hills. And so we just tabulated the responses. This is not a survey monkey thing. We tabulated this ourselves. And Ray Schultz built some graphics for us. So the first question is, what do you love most about your area in Castle Hills? Ryan, if you don't mind going to the next one. It's a little easier to understand, but as you can see, the, the, the most popular answer was that the country feel, the trees, the rural atmosphere of the city, which is exactly what you all have been talking about for a year here. But that's what folks like. Public services also, police, fire, sanitation, all of them are very important to, to our neighbors. They like the large lots, friendly people, neighbors, central location, quiet. And then the number of responses starts to drop off, but still there, the access to the highways in downtown. And we're in the middle of San Antonio. It's a great location. Sense of community, walkability also was, was something that some of the folks mentioned. So those are the big things I like. And in terms of what do you think is the biggest threat to your area in Castle Hills? We got the following responses. And Ryan, if you don't mind going to the next one, please. Again, the, the poorly maintained streets. Although your council is hard at work on that one. But that still keeps coming up. Fear of crime, traffic issues such as speeding or racing or cut-through streets. The fear of subdividing large lots, poorly maintained homes or yards. And lack of planning and investment in our city came up as well, which I thought was interesting. High property taxes and development developers. So those are some of the, the things that folks see as threats to the area. And then the next question, again, what do you want to preserve or improve in your area? And again, we can, we have a graphic, Brian, please. Streets and alleys were the, the highest answer. Again, preserve trees and beauty. Improving community space. Keep the large lots, improve walkability, improve street lighting and traffic control. So, you know, kind of, there's a theme beginning to develop here in, in terms of, I think, what folks want to protect and what they think is important. Okay, and then the last one in this category. As to see what you would like to see preserved or improved about our city in general, not just your area, about the whole city. And so again, down there on the bottom, where the longest bar is, almost 70 responses, the, the lifestyle, the character, the trees. But again, streets is still high on the folks' minds. Improving infrastructure, public space, improving business, commercial. Preserving our police and public works, communication publicity and public facilities, all rated pretty high on this survey. So, so that's those questions. Then with respect to city services. We, we asked folks to rate their city services on a scale of one to 10. And all of the services did very well. The fire, police, garbage and recycling did very, very well. In the nine to 10 range, as you can see here, these graphics come right out of Survey Monkey. But anyway, those four did very, very well. And on the next slide, we have those that are maybe not doing so well. Maybe there's room for improvement in the code enforcement, which the scores, as you can see, were a little bit lower. And street maintenance, again, where the scores were a little bit lower. And then there was a question about what services would you like to see that are not provided now? And we don't have any graphics. I think we're almost out of graphics, unfortunately. But they would like to see an annual or semi-annual boat collection. Compost containers, hazmat material pickup, a library, some responses on a library. And then elderly assistance program, online permit services, playground at the commons or a community pool. And those, you know, there were a million different ideas, and these are just some of them that had more than one person saying them. But you can see the boat collection seemed to be the favorite. And then there's a few questions on land use and zoning, which it was a little hard to get consensus on these. Because again, there were very, a variety of different answers, and it's hard to say, you know, here's the right one in answer to all of these. So I'll just kind of go through some of the answers that we heard and see what y'all think. But some think that with respect to making zoning regulations to preserve neighborhoods or encourage desirable growth. They suggest that the city work more closely with current and future business owners. Respect residential zoning with any development to be respectful of the adjacent residential zoning. And a few calls to bring the zoning code up to date. Okay, and the next question had to do with special uses or variants that might be favored. And again, the idea of avoiding spot zoning, stay consistent with existing use. Encouraging mixed-use development. Get a master plan comprehensive, comprehensive plan done to guide the zoning and board of adjustment decisions. Avoid additional taxes exempt uses. That was something that came through, was the, the taxes exempt question. Folks, that was a little bit of a hot button, that one. And then consider small tax, consider tax breaks for small and minority-owned businesses. So that's the one, the question on. And then we have moved to the Architectural Review Board. Any suggestions on rules or guidelines for architecture review? Some said the ordinance should be updated with clear and specific guidance, recognizing new building techniques. Preserve and enhance neighborhoods, maintain height restrictions. Where road maintenance is added, charge developers. Strive for tasteful uniqueness and diversity of design and maintain single-story residential as much as possible. So I think we got through. Thank you for bearing with me in the non-graphic piece there. But then we asked a question about the types of economic development that folks would like to see. How would you, what would you like to see? And you can see, there's the, the answers there. Commercial development, we had 148 positive responses, residential 119. And then again, that idea of limiting tax exempt development, limiting or managing, I think, is the way the question was phrased. There was 102 folks that responded to that. So anyway, as I say, we'll continue to probe these questions throughout the rest of the process. But in terms of the next question, which is part F. I think, thank you, Ryan. Which type of funding would you prefer if we're gonna do economic development or support projects here? And the, the bond election seemed to be the favorite, followed by increased property taxes and bringing up the rear with certificates of obligation. So that was of that group, anyway. That's the, the way they preferred to see funding. And then the last question was a, it was a simple, you know, this or that question, which perhaps the wisdom in that might be questioned. But in any event, the question was, do you prefer infrastructure maintenance or other improvements to the city to be done? And by a margin of 145 to 41, the folks preferred the infrastructure maintenance. So anyway, and then just to wrap it up, I think there are some overarching themes we've seen through this where the city demographics, we believe, have changed since the comprehensive plan was done 24 years ago. But we want to wait for the new census to confirm that. But citizens value the heavily treated rural appearance of our neighborhoods, public services, lots, central location and quiet neighborhoods. They worry about street maintenance, crime, traffic issues, poorly maintained yards and homes. And each of the six neighborhoods has different and unique needs. And citizens, citizens would like to see responsible development for the business, commercial or residential. But anyway, we look forward to future discussions with our residents as the process moves along, and thank you for your time.
Thank you for your work and for getting that done, Mr. Joyce. I think that was perfect timing as we get into some of our budget discussions and knowing where residents want money allocated. We have any other comments, questions? Okay, we will proceed to item 6.6, consider and act upon proposed tax rate for the year 2021. Take a record vote and schedule a public hearing on the proposed tax rate, Mr. Rapley.
Mary, mind loading that up, please?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Council, what I would like to do is kind of walk you through the presentation here for property tax rate collections. And I hope you bear with me, because again, as we discussed last night in delivery of the budget. This is not my sort of area. This has always been handled by Ms. Fegons. And again, we wish her speedy recovery. And in that case, in helping me put a big piece to the budget together for property tax calculations. Again, as I mentioned last night, I engaged Ms. Vicki Wallace, who's retired finance director from Leon Valley, to go through and help me with these calculations, so. Just a quick timeline overview. You know, we received the tax assessor collectors on July 29th. Calculations submitted to the governing body for review August 9th as part of the budget. Tonight, discuss the tax rate. If proposed tax rate will exceed the no new revenue rate, take a record vote, schedule public hearing and vote to adopt the tax rate. Schedule and announce tax rate three to 14 days from the date, which we have on the calendar for September 7th. And then, of course, adoption of the budget and tax rate levy on 14th. Does that mean, Mary, are you? Okay. Just to, some background, the tax rates comprised of two components, maintenance operations and the interest in sinking. Obviously, since we incurred certificates of obligation and/or debt last year. We've now created the INS, which a portion of the property tax goes to the M and O. And now a portion goes to pay back in the property tax for the INS. The city issued those certificates, obviously, to pay for street and drainage capital projects. The street portion comes from the property tax, which created the INS. Just some background, I know Ms. Fegons covered this last year with the changes as far as Senate bill in 2019. It amends the property tax appraisal requirements, tax rate settings, process notice requirements. Required notice is published on a homepage, website, paper and BCAD. Under the current law, it eliminates one of the two public hearings on the tax rate if required. State law requires one public hearing to be held by the governing body before adopting the proposed tax rate if required. The tax rate can be adopted, as I mentioned before, through the public hearing and can be adopted the same night as the public hearing. If not, you have seven days from the public hearing to adopt that tax rate. The no new tax rate obviously was the effective rate before. It is generally equal to the total tax rate needed to raise the same amount of property tax revenue for the same properties in both tax years. The voter approval tax rate, this is previously known as a rollback. This is, excuse me, the taxing unit, about the same amount of the tax revenue spent previous year, day-to-day operations plus 3.5%. Previously, 8% do that, that change, increase for operations and sufficient funds to pay debts in the coming years. The voter approval tax rate is the no new revenue, maintenance and operation rate times the 1.035 plus the current debt plus unused increment amount rate, excuse me. The diminutist rate, this is created under the Senate bill two. It only applies to certain taxing unit and Castle Hills does qualify. The diminished rate equals the sum of the taxing unit's no new revenue amounts and operation rate. The rate, when applied to taxing current total view, will impose the amount of taxes equal to 500,000. A taxing unit's current debt rate. Tax increase elections for taxing units that calculates the minimus rate. Depends on whether adopted tax rate is greater or less than the voter approval rate and the diminutist rate. I gave you a, a larger print there. This was the analysis. You know, again, Ms. Fegons was able to provide this to you in previous presentations over the years. But it gives a breakout of what the 22 no new never, no new revenue rate shows. The voter approval rate shows the diminutist and what the proposed budget has now been recommended as far as the rate that's in, it's encompassing the, the delivered proposed budget last night. Right now, the tax rate, the no new tax rate is .516733. The estimated revenue from that would be the no new revenue rate would be 3,674,205. The voter approval tax rate, .524899, estimates revenue of 3,722,214. The difference between those two is .00816, so not even a one cent total. And one of the things in discussing real quick with Ms. Wallace is that, you know, since we have incurred this debt. We don't have much room on our tax rate because we have to pay now for the debt payment on the property side. Again, I'm just going back over here, current tax rate is .516733. No new tax rate, the same, and then voter approval rate is that .0008 increase there. The M and O is currently at .4769. And again, encompassing the interest in sinking our debt adds to that .039408. One quick thing to show you is the average home value increases. As I mentioned, in, in having Mrs. Wallace help with these tax rate calculations. In her review, mainly the increases are due, if you look at the 18,0970. You know, that is based on increase to property value versus the actual tax rate increase. So if you look at that average tax increase, voter approval. So if you look at that average tax increase voter approved tax rate. What she told me that a hundred and thirty dollars, actually a hundred dollars of that is due to increased value. And thirty dollars is only for going up to the voter approved tax rate. And then, of course, the average value home increase there last year was three hundred thirty-eight thousand two twenty-nine. And then three hundred fifty-seven one ninety-nine. Again, majority of that has to do with increased value. This real quick shows tax increase, no new revenue versus the adopted rate twenty twenty. And just wanted to give you basically the no new tax rate, two hundred, three hundred, four hundred, five hundred, six hundred thousand. So equating that to what you currently paid in property tax. And your home value there, that's all the increase would be for that property owner. Under the voter approved. Two, three, four, five and six hundred thousand values, what you currently paid last year is on top of that. So if you paid. You know, eighteen hundred dollars in property tax, you'd see a thirty-five dollar increase for a four hundred thousand dollar house right there under the voter approved tax rate. And again, I just wanted to recap here, the allocation, it's the breakdown of the M and O showing what was in our adopted twenty twenty. What twenty twenty-one is we are, you know, looks like as far as a new new revenue. And then the total tax rate there upon the voter approved is the point five two four eight nine nine, again. The point zero zero eight one six increase. One of the things I also wanted to mention to council, I know we've talked to this in budget years before is we are one of the very few cities, and I understand in Texas still, that runs our fiscal calendar on a January first to December thirty-first. And speaking to Ms. Wallace about how we would change that would be some quick steps. As far as getting another auditor, having a shorter budget year. But there are benefits again from running like majority of cities do, October first through September thirty-first. And part of that is crucial for collection of the property tax revenue, which is, you know, the largest revenue collected in the general fund. October first would match the federal government, the fiscal year move to starting on October first seventy-six due to a law passed in seventy-four. You know, we've talked about grant opportunities, federal dollars coming in line. Those would be in line with our fiscal year calendar if we were to change this. As part of the proposed budget, you know, myself as city manager, we are recommending the voter approval tax rate, which is included in there. And I think if I am correct on the budget, it's an increase of about a hundred and ten thousand in revenue, which is majority of my understanding and speaking to her. Increased value for collections of tax purposes is for revenue. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Rapley. Do we have any, Mr. Gregory? Mr. Gregory, use your microphone.
Going back to the page of no new revenue versus twenty twenty adopted tax rate. I'm a little confused as to what that is trying to tell us. Is it, and I can't, I don't, I'm sure I'm misreading this, it's saying a home value of four hundred thousand dollars is only increasing its tax by three dollars?
That's my understanding.
How do you get a hundred and fifty thousand, hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase in revenue, a hundred and ten thousand dollars in increase in revenue? If you're only getting two or three dollars increase per house?
Because we're selecting the voter approved tax rate. If you look there on the larger document here I gave you, because it's smaller on the slide. You would see if we took the voter approved tax rate, we would only be collecting the three million six hundred and seventy-four two oh five. We go with the voter approved, we'll be collecting three million seven hundred and twenty-two three fourteen, which is that difference of the fifty to sixty thousand. Thus, which breaks out the value homes from two to six hundred thousand from eighteen to fifty-three. Again, I have to say, we don't have a lot of room to maneuver because of the debt we've taken on last year to fix streets and drainage.
Is any of the surplus that we're we're asking an increased tax? Is any of that going to pay off in principle or interest of the bond issue?
Yes, the M and O goes to the debt payment for the streets to pay for that. Which is, you see right there, I think we had it broken out on this one. It's roughly the two hundred, I think, twenty thousand that comes out of the interest and sinking debt to pay for the debt payment for streets.
Please correct me if I'm wrong, didn't we say at the time that you know, tax increase to that bond issue? We wouldn't have to have a tax increase if we pass the bond issue?
I'm not sure, Councilman. I'm not sure what was said. I know that when we obligated the certificates of issue, we are going to increase the property taxes on the street side to be able to do that. But again, this, this, this is a majority of an increase is due to the appraisal portion, according to Ms. Wallace. And not necessarily, because you're only looking at point zero zero eight one six, it's not even one cent. So she couldn't even tell me what that one cent was that we were able to provide years before when we just had the M and O. And we could play with moving one or two cents up. You can't do that anymore because of the debt payment.
Mr. Rapley?
Yes, Mr. Paul.
May I respond to that? I believe when we did the certificate of obligation last year. We kept the tax rate the same as the year before. So we didn't increase taxes last year. They stayed exactly the same. It's been for it was reduced, as you remember, a couple of years ago when we had some antics with some people on council. But after that, we brought it back to where it was for probably ten years, I think, two thousand nine, if my memory serves me correct.
Yes.
So this is something different, but that that did stay the same to what it had been.
And again, the current rate was point five one zero six three eight. That that had to be brought up due to pay for the debt as far as what was incurred on the M and O side, I mean, the INS side. And if you look there on the F Y twenty twenty budget assessment to the far, I think on your side, you'd be looking at left. It was point four eight zero one six nine as far as the F Y twenty twenty budget assessment. But again, incurring the INS portion created the need to go up to the point five one six.
Can you explain? Can you explain to me again, the de minimis rate under the fiscal year budget of twenty-two? You have it as fifty-nine cents. When you re-explain the de minimis rate? And then why are we are we looking for? What is this number saying anyway?
The de minimis rate, my understanding is, would require an election. That would actually have to go to the voters to move to that rate.
I see.
Right now, we have
Outside of the threshold, correct?
So sorry, Mayor?
It's outside of the threshold?
It's outside of the threshold. So again, we have two options here. And the de minimis is not in consideration right now.
So we could raise it up to point five nine one without having to have a budget election on the issue.
Now, my understanding it would require past that voter approval rate would require an election.
That's what I'm saying, but you could go up to just that point and not be forced to have an election on that.
And that's it because Mark's got his hand up. Mark?
If if the council wanted to adopt a tax rate in excess of the voter approval tax rate, it will require an election. In addition, it's probably too late to do that this year. Because you haven't held the public hearing on your budget. You can't set your tax rate until after you've held the public hearing on your budget and adopted your budget. The election needs to be called at least seventy-one days before the November election date. And the calendar works against us. This is something, if if there is an interest in increasing the tax rate in future years above the voter approval tax rate. My recommendation is that Mr. Rapley start the budget process as early as mid-May to early June. And this council be, you know, very involved in the budget process. And and predicate a budget based upon what the council feels funds need to be spent for. Unfortunately, for this year. The maximum rate I I think can that can be adopted without an election is the voter approval tax rate that Mr. Rapley is recommending. And it is probably too late to call an election by the time that you hold the public hearing on the budget and adopt the budget and then adopt the tax rate that triggers the automatic election. It's a a fluke that I don't think the legislature it took into account correctly because of the very tight deadlines. Mr. Rapley didn't receive this report from Bear County's Tax Assessor Collector's Office until August second or third, didn't leave a whole lot of time to, you know, see how it fit within the proposed budget.
Do we have any further questions, Council?
And part of that was to get outside experience to help with this in such a short time due to the circumstances we were in.
Okay, if there is
Sorry, may I ask one question?
Yes, sir.
So and and this may be a little tangential, but since you mentioned it in here, if we were to move the fiscal year. When would the budget process have to begin for council to meet all the required obligations deadlines?
That I would have to get with somebody like Ms. Wallace to figure out what that timeline looked like.
Okay.
My understanding is you have to have a condensed budget year. Basically, a shorter year and then have it audited, and then you would start your fiscal year the following year.
I would appreciate if it's possible for us to get that snapshot.
That's what I think would be helpful. Yeah. Okay. Okay. I'm not sure that's that. Well, I, again, I can get with her to see what that scenario looks like, but it's probably something that needs to happen sooner than later. And I've been kind of mentioning that since we started the first budget process here as I became city manager to make sure we're running concurrent with a fiscal calendar, at least federal for grant funding, federal funding and making sure, again. Almost every city runs on a fiscal count, a fiscal from October first to September thirtieth. Mr. Schnau, did you have? Oh, I thought he, Mr. Schnau.
What what you just said, Mr. Rapley is correct. Most cities operate on a on a budget that runs from October one of of say, twenty twenty through September thirty of twenty twenty-one. I will leave to the accounting professionals, you know, how you can effectively change your fiscal year. I think your your summary description to Mr. Isbrand though was correct that we we probably have to have a partial fiscal year of December of of January one to September thirty. You know, i- i- is a transitional period. And then adopt a budget for a year beginning ten, one to nine thirty, but the mechanics and the details, I think I would rather leave and is more appropriately left to a financial consultant or a certified public accountant that does commute municipal audits.
I do know, you know, council as Ms. Fegons has helped us the last three years with the budget process. One of the the things that's been difficult, I understand, is in my other cities I've worked in, started October first. You had an auditor on board shortly after. And then you're collecting, my understanding, ad valorem taxes in the first quarter of your budget. Here, we're collecting those in the last quarter and our auditors are having to go back and make sure we account for what would be our fiscal year, our fiscal calendar in the last quarter of collection of these revenues. Mr. Douglas, I mean, Mr. Gregory.
How would this have would this have the effect of front loading property taxes one year to get to the next if we switched?
I'm I do not know. Again, as Mr. Schnau said, I'd probably need a a financial consultant and you know, I I'm sure Ms. Fegons knew probably the process to do this, but I'm probably gonna have to reach out and see what we can do. And bring that back to council to figure out what that timeline or mechanics, as Mr. Schnau said, to make that change.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I I just think that'd be very helpful to us because we hear this and you brought this up before, Mr. Rapley. And we have to look pretty far out to plan this. So if we had some type of timeline, roadmap, whatever. At the suitable time, I understand you're constrained right now in your financial council, but at the suitable time, I think it'd be helpful as we look beyond this next fiscal year's budget.
Okay, Council, that being said, there's no further questions. We have a recommendation by Mr. Mr. Rapley to adopt the voter approval rate. Do we have a motion?
Yeah, we need a, Mayor, we need to schedule a public hearing, take the record vote. Correct, Mr. Schnau?
This is, this item is only on the vote on a proposed tax rate. Once a motion is made and seconded, this must be a record vote, Mayor. Roll call, record vote.
Yes, sir, I got it.
Did someone make a motion?
I'm just waiting for a motion.
Miss Mayor?
Yes, sir, Mr. May.
I move that we adopt the proposal from the city manager of a tax rate of point five two four eight. And whatever else is on the back of it.
Nine nine.
Nine nine.
Nine nine. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. May. We have a second, Mr. Joyce. Perfect. We have a discussion. Okay, we'll proceed with the roll call vote. Mr. Isbrand?
Aye.
Mr. Paul? Mr. May?
Aye.
Mr. Joyce?
Aye.
And Mr. Gregory? Okay, unanimous. Thank you.
I think we do, we we now schedule the public hearing date, Mr. Schnau?
The mayor opens item six point seven, Mr. Rapley.
That's for the but schedule the public hearing on the proposed budget. We need to schedule.
Okay, then then now another motion to would be in order to do the scheduling of the public hearing on the tax rate.
Okay, Mr. May?
Mr. Mayor, I propose that we set this hearing for September seventh for the tax rate.
Thank you, Mr. May. Do we have a second? Mr. Paul? On, do we need a roll call vote on this as well, Mr. Schnau?
I think it would be appropriate, but we also need a time for this meeting.
Mr. May, would you like to? Mr. Paul, are you good with that? Perfect. We'll proceed with the roll call vote. Mr. Isbrand?
Aye.
Mr. Paul? Mr. May?
Aye.
Mr. Joyce?
Aye.
Mr. Gregory?
Aye.
Okay, motion passed unanimously. We will now proceed to item six point seven, consider and act upon scheduling a public hearing on the proposed budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, Mr. Rapley.
Thank you, Mayor. As part of the process to adopt the budget, we will need to include a public hearing. Staff obviously had developed the calendar that you had approved. We have on the calendar calling for publication of a notice of the hearing to be done on August twenty-fifth. And for the public hearing on the budget to be held on Tuesday, September seventh, twenty twenty-one at six thirty P M.
Thank you, Mr. Rapley. Do we have a motion? Mr. May?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we have that same hearing on September the seventh at six thirty P M in the evening. For the budget.
Thank you, Mr. May. Second by Mr. Paul. We will proceed with the roll call vote, just in abundance of caution. Mr. Isbrand?
Aye.
Mr. Paul? Mr. May?
Aye.
Mr. Joyce?
Aye.
Mr. Gregory?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you, Council. We'll now proceed to item six point eight, discussion of possible action on an appointment to the Parks and Projects Commission, Mr. Paul. Mr. Rapley? For six point eight, Mr. Paul said he doesn't have anybody yet.
Then we will go ahead and table. I know that.
Uh, then we will go ahead and table. I know that. So. So we received the notice that uh Mr. Squire had declined um appointment to the Parks and Projects Commission. And so uh we proceeded to put it back on the agenda. Um, so we we can table until Mr. Paul finds his selection or appointment to it.
Mr. Paul, does that offer stand right now you just made? If anybody has any other nominations? If not, we can forego this item and bring it up at a later time. Okay, in that case, we will proceed to item six point nine. Discussion of possible action and appointments to the Crime Control and Prevention District Chief.
Mr. Mayor.
Chief.
Mayor, Councilman, good evening. Currently, we have uh four positions on the crime control that are up for reappointment or um. New nominations or reappointments um that expire at on August thirty first of this year. Those positions are currently held by uh uh Jim Jones. Uh, John Marr, Richard Evans, and George Booth. Uh, the other three positions are are not set to expire or their terms don't expire until next year. Uh, same time, August thirty first.
Point of order. A question.
Sir, Mr. Isbrand.
Is the protocol for these nominations for a nomination a second in the council vote?
I truthfully don't remember, Mr. Schnell, I'm gonna defer to you.
Yes, this is different from the appointments um to several of the other bodies where the council has previously decided. That each council member by place has an appointment. Um, Mr. Isbrand's uh explanation or or description of what happens is correct. This isn't a, these appointments are by the council as a whole. And and I will point out, although terms end on August thirty one under the state constitution. Um, members of this board would continue until their replacements are appointed and qualified. So that that, you know, if 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 there aren't. All four filled by new people. Some of these people might continue on. Need to clarify which place where each each nominee is replacing. For clarification on that issue.
Thank you, Mr. Schnell. Mr. Gregory.
This is a a committee very close to my heart. I was the one that backed the chief years ago to start it. It's been very positive for the city. It's been extraordinarily beneficial to the police department. Of the four open spaces, one person is passed, so of course, we don't want him. He's not here. But the council did approve in the past, Mr. Booth, Marr. Uh, I've come to know Mr. Jones, he's extraordinary chairman. So I would like to place a nomination. Read uh Mr. Booth, Mr. Marr, and Mr. Jones. To continue for another two-year terms respectively.
How many can you bring up? Point of order.
Uh, Mr. Isbrand, yes, sir.
Is are these nominations um to be individual action by the council or as a slate?
Mr. Schnell, can we get a? Opinion on that?
It's up to the person making the nomination.
Thank you.
Okay.
Well, and the the last time, uh, I think I was the only one who made the nomination except for Mr. Jones. And because I didn't know him. Whoever nominated him, he he extraordinary person. Uh, I I hope you all have at least attended some of these meetings, any of these meetings. Because this is probably the the second most powerful committee in the city with regard to money. And these people have experience. And you don't have to reinvent the wheel with these people. And I strongly urge Mr. Booth, Marr, and Jones to be renominated for another two-year term.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory. And Mr. Schnell, that's uh voted on by the council now, correct?
Um, if there's a second, yes, sir.
Okay, I'm sorry. Is there a second for that? Okay, I'll ask one more. Miss, Miss Tedford, can you use your microphone?
I apologize. For clarification, did you nominate Mr. Booth, Mr. Marr, and Mr. Jones?
It separately with the council would appreciate that as opposed to individually.
Okay, well.
Well, there's four slots.
I'll do it separately. It will, they can, they can reject or accept it separately. Is that all right, Mr. Mayor?
Well, we have a motion on the table. Let's exhaust this one, Mr. Gregory, if you don't mind. And I believe those were the three names that he presented. I'll ask one more time if there's.
Point of order, please.
Mr. Paul.
Do the rules allow one person to just nominate three or four people off the hat like that?
Uh, Mr. Schnell just clarified that they do not specify either way.
That's why Mr. Paul decided to pull that nomination.
I can't hear you with those masks.
I've decided to pull the nomination of three as a bunch and I'll do it one at a time and let you all accept or reject. The name is one at a time, if that's more acceptable to you.
Well, I think that there are five of us up here and if each of us may have somebody that we want to put forth, and that's why I was curious why you're.
Well, because the last time they were unanimously approved.
Well, uh.
And unless somebody has found something that these people have not done well, I would assume they would be unanimously approved again.
Well, that's something I guess council would decide here.
Okay, well, we can do this democratically, Mr. Gregory. Who's your nominee?
I'll do it one one at a time. John Marr.
Okay, we have a nomination for John Marr, all in favor. I'm sorry, do we have a second? Uh, that's one more time. Do we have a nom- a second for Mr. Marr? Okay.
James Jones.
Okay, we have a nomination for Mr. James Jones. Do we have a second? I'll ask one more time. Do we have a second? Okay, Mr. Gregory?
And George Booth.
And we have another nomination for Mr. George Booth. Do we have a second? I'll ask one more time. Do we have a second? Okay. And that being said, before we get into it, I do have one nomination that I made that's the gentleman reached out to me that I would like to reappoint. As Mr. Richard Evans. He's uh been serving and he asked me for the opportunity to continue serving. Counsel, if there's a second, I would appreciate it. Mr. May?
I'll second that.
Okay. Um, all in favor of Mr. Evans? Opposed? Oh, so I'm sorry, that was Mr. Paul and Mr. May for um. Were you opposed, Mr. Isbrand?
I'm gonna vote no.
Okay, uh, Mr. Isbrand was opposed. Mr. Gregory, are you abstaining? Uh, for Richard Evans? Or CCPD? I just nominated him. Well, there was a motion, I made the motion, Mr. May seconded. And um I believe Mr. Paul and Mr. May voted for it. Mr. Isbrand voted against it.
I wrote no.
Nay? Okay, that's a nay. Uh, so.
I'm sorry, Mayor, I I would like to change my vote to a yea on this.
Okay, um, let's do that again one more time.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
Okay, for Mr. Evans, we have a motion, but that I nominated him a second by Mr. May, all in favor?
When did Mr. Evans come on the board?
Last year or the la- in twenty nineteen.
All right.
All in favor for Mr. Evans? Phew, unanimous, thank you, counsel. I will entertain the next nomination, Mr. Isbrand.
Uh, Mayor, I would, uh, in council, I would uh move the motion of Chance Kaufman. I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand. Um, second by Mr. Paul. All in favor for Mr. Kaufman? Opposed?
Abstain.
Okay, uh, we have one abstention by Mr. Gregory. We have two more. Mr. May?
Mr. Mayor, I nominate Ma- uh, Patsy Martin.
Thank you, Mr. May. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, my friend. Mr. Paul, um, all in favor? Opposed? Okay, motion passes.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Paul.
I'd like to nominate John Squire. Uh, he has been. Working with the city on the different committees, and I think he's very capable. And is has a desire to do what's best for the city.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Do we have a second?
Second.
That, Mr. Isbrand?
Yes, sir.
Um, all in favor for Mr. Squire? Opposed? Abstaining. Okay, Mr. Joyce abstained and it passed three to one with Mr. Gregory voting against. I believe that's all for them, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you, chief. Um, next up, we have item six point ten, discussion of possible action on sending. A city letter to Governor Abbott requesting that in view of the increasing number of Texans testing positive for COVID nineteen. And the interest of public health and safety. Municipalities be permitted to require employees and visitors to the city buildings to be that fully vaccinated with the COVID nineteen vaccine, including vaccination. Under an emergency youth authorization. Mr. Gregory?
A little background on this, I've been very concerned about what's been going on in our state. And I talked with the city manager, with the our city attorney, and he said. My proposal to have the city employees and everybody who's on any committee. Have proof of vaccination, he said that was in violation of the executive order. So in lieu of that. Uh, the following was put forth, the following proposal. But there's breaking news this afternoon, so I don't know whether we go, where we go on this. Uh, the Bear County and the city of San Antonio has sued. The uh, the governor and it has acquired an injunction to, and they want to have the local governments to. Dictate when an emergency occurs, let them control it. So I don't know, Mr. Schn- Schnoll. It might know if there's anything, whether they had uh. Proceed that temporary restraining order tonight, maybe they'll have it tomorrow. I would, I would like to know that first. And if they have received it, we don't have to do anything.
Uh, is is my understanding that temporary restraining order doesn't apply to vaccines, but Mr. Schnell can tell us a little bit more.
Um, I thought that the action today related to uh the governor's prohibition of local governments. Imposing mask requirements, mask mandates. I don't think it applied to vaccinations. And I believe that the it an injunction was not issued, simply a temporary restraining order. And it's my understanding that the matter has been set for a hearing um on a temporary injunction. Um, on Monday of next week, I guess that would be the um sixteenth of um. Of August. Uh, is so, but it but it only applied, as I understand it, to the uh governor's prohibition of. Uh, local governments um imposing ma- mask mandates, not about vaccination, so. It's it's the will of the council, whether they want to authorize uh the letter described in this um agenda item.
Well, I do believe the city has a responsibility. To the citizens of the city. That they can be assured that not seeing no one who works for the city or is on any council. Has the potential of spreading the virus to the citizens of the city in which they interact all the time. This does not apply to citizens of the city who are. Who aren't working for the city, or I mean, they they're exempt. Everybody except people who are working for the city or people on councils. That's the least I think we can do. We have that within our purview. And I think that is the the least we can do to protect people if they want to go to meetings. We want to go to council meetings, if they want to talk with the police chief. If they want to go to zoning commission meetings, they want to be reassured. That whom they're talking to has been vaccinated and to the best of our ability. We've done all we can to slow the spread of the variant as they come come down the road. So I guess this is the only thing we can do. Right now, this is.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory. Do we have any discussion? Mr. Joyce? No, we don't have a motion on the table. We can have a maybe a motion for uh discussion. Anybody's willing?
I'll move that we discuss the issue.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Joyce.
I'll second.
Second, my Mr. Isbrand, Mr. Joyce, please.
Thanks, Mayor. I appreciate the sentiment of of this. Possible action here, but you know, I'm not a, I'm not a big mandate person. I believe certainly it's our responsibility as the leaders of this city. To look after the health and welfare of our citizens. But to me, that means providing them the best information available. So they can make the best decision. But I don't think the decision should be ours. I think the decision should be the citizen's decision. And I think actually there's a, there's a lot of info we can actually do in terms of informing our citizens, in my opinion. There's a lot we can do. If you look at the COVID nineteen section of our website, if we made that more robust. You know, if we had a. If we had a link to the CDC, if we had a link to some of the studies that are done, if we had a link to. Discussions of the efficacy of the masks and things like that. Perhaps a link to uh vaccination websites. Now, those are the kinds of things that I think we should do is to provide our citizens with information. And employees and guests as well. And um leave the decision to them. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Joyce. Real quick, I forgot we have a citizen sign to speak, Mr. Junimire.
Bernard Jedemire, one one five East Castle Lane. I agree with Mr. Joyce, and he's said it for me, so there you go. Thank you.
Perfect. Uh, Mr. Isbrand?
Uh, I I'm I'm glad we're having this discussion because I think this is kind of tough. And we have three items here that are either gonna be be viewed, well, will be viewed, I guess, because we have to vote on each individually. They're gonna be looked at disparately. At the same time that we have the lawsuit filed today, we have the T R O issued this afternoon. It's gonna be kind of hard to figure this one out. Um, the fact of the matter is, though, that the, you know, something like ninety-eight percent of individuals who are being hospitalized. Because of COVID are unvaccinated. Um, that should be very disturbing to us. Um, we, the the next item we have up that I'll, I I won't talk to because I'm not supposed to on that. But mask is i- is a completely different thing and seems very reasonable and has been used before. I guess my question about this is, uh, the way this item is written is it would require employees and visitors to city buildings to be fully vaccinated. And while I absolutely agree and advocate for everyone to get vaccinated. And we know that those who haven't are even infect- infecting those of us who have. Are we in a position to say you cannot come to City Hall, you cannot interact with us if you have not been vaccinated? Versus if you have not taken any precaution? And we know that the CDC guidelines do say that masks are the way to do that. So those, that's just the thought I put on the table. I'm really interested in hearing what you all have to say tonight. About the degree of appropriateness of the options that we're talking about here. If, and keeping in mind that we're not taking any action on this, we are just um determining whether we want to send a letter to the governor. Um, and I'll just leave it at that, asking for him to um act in the public's behalf.
Well, in response to the end visitors, I would remove that. I only want to have employees of the city. And those who are on committees, of course, that's the committee's not here. People that we employ and we have. Control over to a degree. When they go out in the community to interact with people, we can, they can be, the community, it's educated as they want to. But the community has got to be reassured that when the, when the employees of the city are going out and interacting with people. The city has done as much as they can possibly do. To protect the people who live in the city. By ensuring those who are working for the city are fully vaccinated. We're not telling anybody who lives in a house, they've got to be vaccinated or wear a mask. Or hop down the street on one leg. We're just simply saying the employees of the city, you can be rest assured, they are vaccinated.
Right.
And that's it.
And and I absolutely get that, Mr. Gregory, and I absolutely appreciate that sentiment. I I'm try, I guess in, I'm trying to be a pragmatist here too. Of, we know that we have had the ability to enforce a mask mandate before. We have never had this ability before. We have never had this ability before. And I think that anyone who thinks that this governor is suddenly going to give us this ability, ability is not looking at it realistically. And I think it's important if we are going to beseech the state of Texas to take these, some kind of action or empower us to take action. It would be something that we know, at least there has been precedent there before, or there is a likelihood of it happening. Otherwise, we're just spinning our wheels.
Well, many large businesses in the country today have said in the last seventy-two hours, Amazon being one of them, Walmart being another, DuPont being a third, along with many educational institutions. Duke University will not allow the incoming freshman class to come in unless they have proof of vaccination. And everybody will have to show proof of vaccination unless they, if they don't, they'll be tested every week. So this is coming through the private sector. Now, I'm a very strong Republican, as you can get. But I think the governor is flat out wrong in certain aspects of what he's done. And this aspect is something we can control, just like many businesses are saying. You can't come back to Goldman Sachs and Morgan Stanley came out and said, you can't come back to work unless you're fully vaccinated, period.
Right. And again, I appreciate the sentiment and agree absolutely with what you're saying. But what we are doing here is talking about writing a letter to the governor, saying, hey, governor, you're already opposed to all these other things. But how about you let us now start mandating vaccinations too? I just don't think it's realistic that that's going to happen. But I think it's important that where we see the opportunity to appeal, where we have, there has been previous precedent of mandated masks, that we don't want to dilute that voice with something that simply isn't going to happen. And I just, maybe I'm being too pessimistic about it.
Well, it, it might not happen. There is probably, it will not happen, but cumulative effect is sort of like grains of sand on a beach. One grain doesn't do much. But if a lot of little cities, as well as one or two largeness like Houston and Dallas also follow in, the will of the collective, will of the people will be noted, even though they come in dribs and breads. Our sending this letter will probably have no effect by itself. But if it is counted among the hundreds of other little towns and cities that may send similar letters, it may have an effect.
Okay, real quick, I'm going to give some other council members time to provide some input. Mr. Paul, you've been waiting patiently.
Yeah, just quickly, number one, who's going to be the gatekeeper here? Number two, you've already gone away from the parameters of your agenda item, because your agenda item says require employees and visitors to city buildings, visitors. So that's outside the realm of employees. So we're reaching, and I just don't feel we're able to do that. I don't think that's in their purview. I think we can put warnings. I think we can go back to do what we were doing before, put it on the door if that becomes the case. And when you refer to item six eleven, the mayor's recommendation, I think this will more than take care of what we should be doing.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Mr. May?
Well, first off, vaccination, I agree with you, Mr. Gregory. I wish everyone would do that. But the bottom line is the pragmatic message we're sending. I think we should stand shoulder to shoulder with our brethren in the county and with our surrounding San Antonio, and don't miss message, because this is still in play. And I think our governor may actually go with a suggestion that has already been messaged by the leaders in Bear County. And I, I think we also need not forget, we have breakthrough infections even through vaccination. And so the one thing we can do without infringing on an individual's personal right to consult with their physician on the appropriateness of their need or desire to get vaccinated should not be violated. There literally are people that may not need or, or should get vaccinated. That is something between them and their doctor. I think we need to take the pragmatic approach. And we need to message on point with our county brethren and talk about the mask in the second and third proposals below.
Thank you, Mr. May. Mr. Joyce? You have any more comments?
No more comments, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. I, I'll be completely transparent and say that I'm a proponent of the vaccine and I received it, but it gives me a little bit of heartburn, the idea that we're going to mandate that for our residents. And it feels like a little bit of an overreach. I'm sorry, not residents, employees, I understand. It feels like a little bit of an overreach. And my concern is that we're, Mr. Gregory, you said that we're doing everything we can, everything that we can is wearing a mask. It starts there, and then it builds from there. There are people that, for whatever reason, they cannot get vaccinated. And I feel like banning them from City Hall would be premature, especially when they are in a position where they medically are not able, may not be able to get vaccinated. Mr. Knippel, you've been waiting patiently. Do you have a comment?
I think that there's employees and people that would come to Castle Hills to visit citizens, employees, workers. We can't, I see, we're going down a very slippery slope. I don't want you around me. I don't want you working for me unless you've got a vaccine. We're not Nazi Germany. My dad fought against fascism. He told me stories of what they did. It started with Jews, where across, where the vaccination thing, it's personal. It's personal across the board. Each person's to do what their physician tells them to do, what their heart tells them to do. But we do not need to be checking, do you have your papers? Now, I don't have me all remember that, and maybe I'm just preaching to the choir. But I do not believe a letter to the governor is useful. I don't believe you ought to force people to wear masks, where to go to, to take a vaccine, to prove proof of vaccination. I know you're not doing that, but we don't need to add on to the problems. Citizens already are getting vaccinated. They're doing what they need to do. And I'm afraid that if we're not careful across the board here, across the nation, we're going to end up with people that say, if you don't have a vaccination, you can't work and feed your children. So I do not approve of doing this at all. I think you ought to not send a letter to the governor. I think we ought to just encourage our citizens, maybe park a hospital thing out there, offering free vaccinations. If people want free masks, give free masks to them. You know, educate people, but not force people, because we're America. And we need to make, each person makes their separate decision of what they want. And if I walk past you and you don't want to be near me, then don't be near me. I'm vaccinated, but it doesn't mean everybody else should be vaccinated. And everybody else shouldn't have to be forced to show that to work anyways. And of course, private sector is doing that. But I'm not agreeing on that either. But this is a governmental thing where we elect people to help us, or y'all do it out of the kindness of your heart to help us. And we have policemen and farm and everybody else that work helping us. But we don't need to discriminate against them because privately, somebody that works here or wants to work here or visit here might be embarrassed that they can't take the vaccine, and we don't want to put a finger on. So thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Knippel. Do we have any more comments, counsel?
Yes. People may not know, but we've had mandatory vaccinations for decades in this country with children going to school. You have to be vaccinated for things like mumps, measles, several other different things. That, that's been enforced for decades. Now, I just, I find it, I find it curious, when we found out that one employee in this city had been vaccinated, yet had tested positive for the variant, some of the council immediately rushed off to make sure whether they've been infected or not. I, I I think it is the height of irresponsibility of people who are in charge. You say, I have the right to do this, and I have the right to do that. But I have the right to infect whomever I want to. Well, you have that right if you live here. But I'm not so sure you should have that right if you work here. And you know, it's you're going to have, it looks like you're about to have it directly from the Department of Defense, that everybody in the armed services has got to be vaccinated, like it or not. It's, it's this is a, this is a not a sledgehammer, but a sledgehammer is coming if other common sense things aren't approved. But I can, whatever the council wants to do. I'll leave it to them.
Mayor, I, I appreciate the sentiment and call the question.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand.
Excuse me, there is no question to call. I heard Mr. Joyce say.
I apologize for that, Mr. Schnell. Thank you.
And I heard Mr. Joyce say, I just want to discuss this. So there does not need to be a motion unless someone wants to make a motion. If there's a motion, it needs a second, et cetera.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Joyce to discuss. If there's no further motion for action, we will proceed to the next item. Okay, item six point eleven, discussion of possible action on sending a city letter to Governor Abbott requesting, in view of the increased number of Texans testing positive for COVID-19, and in the interest of public health and safety, municipalities be permitted to require employees and visitors to cities to, building to wear a face covering over mouth and nose if not fully vaccinated. I asked to have this on the agenda because we know that masks help. I, I can't say with a hundred percent certainty, or I don't think anybody can, that masks are going to fix the problem completely, but they make a difference. And I'm also concerned about city employees because we do not have a big staff. We are very lean, and we don't have the depth for backup if employees get sick. And I'm trying to, I would like to see this protect them and the guests that come into City Hall. Being that they are able to do so, I don't know that it provides a adverse health to wear a mask. So my recommendation was to send a letter, obviously, city of San Antonio and Bear County have filed the TRO and been given the TRO by Judge Artiaga until Monday, but I'm not sure what's going to happen at that point. Mr. Isbrand?
So again, sort of picking up that conversation, we have had mask mandates in effect before. I think the pragmatic approach is to appeal to the governor to allow what has previously been in place to be in place again.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand. And just to add on, last thing was, you know, I'd like to see local control given back if this council decides that everybody walked into the city hall, has to wear a mask forever and ever. I think that that's up to the voters to vote us out because they believe that it's not the right action. But I would argue that the majority of citizenry understand our intentions and realize that we're doing this with science behind us and for a limited amount of time as needed. Mr. Paul, you had a comment?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to have the mayor proceed with such a letter at the appropriate time based upon the TRO, where we are with that, if you feel is necessary, so that we can proceed on the getting it done. And it just puts us back to what we've done in the past, and it seemed to work.
Thank you, Mr. Paul.
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. May. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Gregory?
I find this very curious, what the council is doing. On six point one, how are you going to determine if somebody is not fully vaccinated? You have it written, you've got to wear a face mask, face covering over mouth and nose if not fully vaccinated. How are you going to determine whether somebody is fully vaccinated or not?
Can you repeat that, Mr. Paul?
Well, he's right on terminology. It could be because you can't do that, just like we couldn't do it on the suggestion that Mr. Gregory had a while ago. And it should just say, we need to go back to the face mask. And, and that would be what I thought you were talking about, sending the letter accordingly.
Yes, sir. And I think just across the board that everybody wears a mask. I'm sorry if there's any discrepancy in the agenda summary is written.
So if somebody comes in here, you see, mine was very different, Mr. Paul, you made a mistake. We can find out from the people who work in this city whether they're vaccinated or not because they would show proof to the city manager whether they have it or not, by the little card you get when you get vaccinated. And we can tell people, carry the cards, show the city manager. But how are we going to have everybody who comes to the city, employees and visitors? There is absolutely no way you can determine, as opposed to what I suggested, which you can determine. There's no way you can determine if somebody's fully vaccinated. I was at HEB the other day, half of them weren't wearing masks. I don't know whether they're wearing masks or not.
Mr. Gregory, I just clarified that it would be everybody wears a mask. Yes.
I wonder if we could get, if Mr. Paul would be open to restating his motion so that we can get that clarity.
Mr. Paul, are you willing to amend it? I'm sorry.
Take out the last four words.
Okay, so you're amending it without?
With, without the vaccination. It needs to be with the mask. And we need to make sure that the employees and visitors who come into, that's what we're asking the governor to allow us to do.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Mr. Mayor, you good with that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just would have one. As to the substance, I am in total agreement. But if in the letter, we can also message that we stand with our brethren in Bear County and San Antonio, the seventh largest city in America. Our goal here is to get results. And this governor needs to know that we are not happy with what's come down. And I think there's a chance he's going to change his mind, and I want to be part of that chance.
Thank you, Mr. May. Any further discussions?
Mr. Schnell, can you clarify a comment? I, I can't really inquire whether or not someone has a vaccination.
There are equal employment opportunity commission guidelines on this. I have not read it in about six weeks when it first came out. There are certain issues regarding vaccination. But I, I think this discussion does not need to happen right now. Right now, there's a motion about masks, sending a letter about masks. It's not about vaccinations.
Thank you, Mr. Schnell. All in favor?
I have a question, if I can. I, I understood that, Mr. May, perhaps you were asking for a friendly amendment to Mr. Paul's motion here. Did I misunderstand that?
Sorry, I took that as a
That, that's just a suggestion in, in the letter. The form and substance is the motion. So I'm just suggesting
Okay.
Another line in the letter might be that we are in conformity with what's already been stated by the San Antonio and Bear County officials.
Okay, thank you.
Are you adding that as a part of the motion? As an amendment?
Do you? I didn't interpret that as you adding that in the amendment. If it is, let me know.
It's not an amendment. I, I don't want to get formalistic.
Okay, thank you. I just want to understand what we're actually voting on there. Thank you.
Perfect. Okay, all in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, counsel. Okay, item six point one two, discussion of possible action on sending a city letter to Governor Abbott requesting the, that in view of the increasing number of Texans testing positive for COVID-19, and in the interest of public health and safety, the governor immediately reinstated the suspension of various sections of the Texas Open Meeting Act to permit municipalities to hold meetings by technology or by telephone conference call that will otherwise no longer be permitted during the declared public health emergency after August thirty-first, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Thank you, Mr. Gregory. Just for background, I wanted to clarify that I asked for this to be on here because we know that if somebody tests positive, that it's recommended that they stay away to avoid infecting other people. And I think that allowing council members or anybody necessary to participate virtually allows city business to continue to move forward without the risk of exposure to the rest of the city. And it just seems like a little bit of good business. Mr. Schnell?
Just for a little background for the council. This, this is a result of the fact that at the end of June, when the numbers were so much better than they are today, the Office of the Attorney General asked the governor to terminate the ability to do Zoom or video call or conference call meetings of public entities effective at twelve oh one AM on September first. We live in a different world today on August tenth than we did when the governor agreed to cancel his suspension of the various sections of the Open Meetings Act that allowed the Zoom meetings. So I just thought that small amount of background might be helpful to the council.
Thank you, Mr. Schnell. And just for clarification, the ability, the suspension ends October, August thirty-first. And I think it's a good option for us to be able to move the city forward. I think we had one person signed up to speak on that. Mr. Junimire?
Thank you for hearing me today. I think that's Thank you for hearing me today. I think it's a great idea. If someone gets sick, you know, Zoom, I mean, obviously, we got the technology for it, so why not continue it? So, yeah, on this one. Thumbs up.
Perfect. Thank you. Any further discussion, counsel?
I traveled for nine months, and this was very helpful.
I I just want to say it's my understanding, Mr. May, that you have actually been actively involved in communicating this concern, at least among other suburban cities in the San Antonio area, and that there were a number of them that were unaware of the impact of if this is allowed to run its course. So I just want to express my appreciation for your leadership on this. I think it's it's critical, and and we're grateful for what you've done on this.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand. Here to serve, just like all of us. That being said, if there's no further discussion, all in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, counsel. Announcements of mayor and council members on items of community interest. Mr. Isbrand.
Wear a mask, get the vaccine. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand. Mr. Paul. Mr. May.
Same and reserve Sunday, September twenty six to celebrate our founding. We're going to have a couple of cool events, and the evening event, there will be a ticket for for purchase at the Veranda. It's nineteen fifty's theme. So pull out those that old wardrobe, get on whatever you felt comfortable in in nineteen fifty one, nineteen fifty two, and I'll see you there.
Thank you, Mr. May. Mr. Joyce.
Speaker's forum, August twenty four, twenty six, twenty eight. Please come. Thank you.
Mr. Gregory.
Only thing I was wearing in nineteen fifty two was an incubator. That's it.
Okay, one quick thing I wanted to add, and we're working with CPS Energy on a couple of different initiatives. One of them was having them do a study on why some of the power is going out in areas of Castle Hills more often than others. They have the results of that study. They also suggested that we get a vegetation study because some of it's related to the trees. We can expect to have a report from CPS within the next month, or maybe at our next council meeting in September, where they can tell us what's going on and actions that we can do as a city to help them get everything back online. Lastly, on the topic of CPS, after having some conversations with our government affairs liaison, they've agreed to do in-office hours for the city of Castle Hills. So we will have a CPS representative sitting at the back table a certain time a month that you can call and make appointments and sit with the live person as opposed to having to go through a teleprompter and putting all kinds of numbers in and getting redirected. So you can expect to see information about that on the website. You can make an appointment, and she will be here live and in person. Mr. Rappley.
Just a reminder, we'll have a budget workshop next Tuesday night at six thirty.
Perfect. That being said, I will entertain Mr. May.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. May. A second by Mr. Paul. All in favor? Unanimous meeting is adjourned. It's nine oh four. Everybody have a good evening.